Okay, good morning everyone. My name is councillor Jane Dunn. I'm chairing today's meeting of the Licensing Subcommittee. Before we start, I am a bit deaf in the ear due to Covid. So if I have to ask you to repeat, please, I do apologise, but I'm absolutely fine. But it keeps popping and filling up, so I'm acting like a bit of an old lady today, so I'm sorry. Okay, so we're going to go through some introductions. Have we all got copies of the report or would you like one to refer to? Yeah, lovely. We'll just do that before we start and then you can, while we're doing introductions, you can get your papers and everything. Thank you. Okay, does anybody want water? You're okay. Yeah, that's brilliant. Thank you very much. As I said, councillor Jane Dunn, we're going to go through introductions. I'll go to...
Thanks Chair. Morning, Lewis Chin Chen, councillor and member of the Subcommittee.
Councillor Taliau, a member of this committee.
That was a loud one, sorry. Samantha Bond, legal adviser to the Subcommittee.
I'm Jack Roseport from Legal Services, just here making up the hearing today.
I'm Nick White, actually on behalf of the applicant. Oh, sorry. I thought we were going... Sorry about that.
No, it's no problem.
My name is Nick White, acting on behalf of Walton Trade Limited, the applicant.
Okay, my name's Jane Gough from Licensing and I'm here to read the report.
My name is Pauline, I'm from Licensing.
I'm Jenny Skibber from Democratic Services, take the minutes.
Good morning, I'm Peter Sefton and I chair the Residents' Association for the City Centre called Changing Chef. We call it that because we aim to change the city centre into a great place to live with spin-off benefits for everyone else who uses the city centre.
Hi, my name's Mark Booth, I'm a resident of West One.
Sorry. My name's Maxine Biggin and I'm a resident of West One.
Thank you very much. Okay, right. I'm going to go over to Jane, just a little bit of housekeeping first. We've already had our farrel on test this morning, so if one goes off, we're all going to follow Jenny to safety, okay? So is there any declarations of interest from anybody? Okay, lovely, no exclusion of the press or public? No, okay, that's fine. I will hand over to Jane to introduce the report, to Sam first, to do the legal bit, so sorry, which I've already half-done by the way. But Sam's going to go through the legal proceedings as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you Chair. So the procedure for the hearing this morning, relatively straightforward, but I'll just run through it anyway. It's right at the back of your papers pack on page 66. So the Licensing Officer, who's Jane this morning, will introduce the report. If there's any questions concerning the report, that's a time for those to be raised. So if there's anything missing or that needs clarifying, so we can get that amended for the record. We've no responsible authorities present today, so what we'll do is hand straight over to the residents to set out their representations as per the report and anything else that they need to ask, sorry. We'll then have an opportunity for questions from members and officers and with the leave of the Chair, the applicant will also be able to put questions to the residents. We'll then head over to Mr White to detail the case on behalf of the applicant today. Similarly, questions from members and officers and with the leave of the Chair, residents may also put questions to the applicant. Then given the opportunity to sum up the application, just to leave us with any final thoughts before we take the options from the Licensing Officer. What we'll then do is go into private session so the members can consider the application and come to a decision. So we'll pause the hearing recording and just ask you guys and the Licensing Officers to wait outside while we confer and then we'll invite you back in to give you that decision if you want to hang around for it. If not, the copy and writing will follow as well. So the decision of the committee today will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003 and regulations made there under. At any time during the hearing, members can request legal advice. So either an open session, as we are now, and we can just have an open discussion, or in closed session. Similarly to when we make the decision, we'll just ask you to wait outside, pause the recording while that takes place and we'll feed that back once we invite you in and restart the recording. And as the Chair's already set out, the hearing this morning is in public and in accordance with the regulations, we haven't determined that the public should be excluded. So it is live webcast, obviously there's no one else present today, but the recording is live and going out there. And I think that's everything from me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam. I will now hand over to my namesake, Jane, spoke the same way, to introduce the report. Thank you, Jane.
Thanks Chair. Welcome this morning to the Licensing Subcommittee to determine the grant application for Soho, units eight and nine, West One Plaza, Sheffield S1 for JB. So the applicant is Walton Trade Limited, excuse me. And the application was received by the Licensing Service on the 15th of Feb 2023, a full copy of which is in the report at Appendix A. So throughout the consultation period, there have been agreed conditions and a change in the operation timings with both South Yorkshire Police and the Environmental Protection Service. Furthermore, conditions have also been agreed with Sheffield City Council's Health Protection Service and a copy of all these conditions can be found and the timings at Appendix B within the report. So the reason for referral this morning is that there are unresolved representations from the two local residents and the resident group, obviously in attendance today, on the grounds of preventing public nuisance and the concern that the impact that the requested alcohol timings will have on local residents in relation to noise nuisance. The applicant and residents have agreed some conditions so far in Appendix D as outlined. However, the representations remain outstanding. A full copy of these can be found at Appendix C of the report. It should be noted that the applicant has subsequently agreed to remove part H of the operating schedule from the application altogether, so no longer wishes to seek permissions for that section. Everybody who has made valid representations and applicant have all been invited to the hearing in attendance today. So if you don't mind, I'm going to scoop through to section eight, save all the blurb. So the Appeal Section, the Licensing Act 2003, section 181, Schedule 5, makes provision for appeals to be made by the applicant and those making representations against decisions of the Licensing Authority to the Magistrates Court. So the recommendations this morning are that members carefully consider all representations made and take such steps as the Subcommittee consider appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives. That's all now Chair, thanks.
Thank you. Councillors, any questions on the accuracy of the report? Okay. Any questions from officers on the accuracy of the report?
Not a question as such, sorry, just as a point of clarification in respect of the karaoke. I know you've agreed to remove it from the application itself, although it is no longer classed as a licensable activity. So you would, between the hours of 8am and 11pm, still be able to provide that without requiring the authorisation for it and just to clarify that for the report. I know you've already agreed to take it off, but as members still have to agree what's been agreed essentially, I'm just opening that up for discussion if it needs to be.
Thank you, Sam. Peter, it's on accuracy of the report.
Question about what Jane's just said. She mentioned that part H has been removed, but it's a big document. Which page is part H on, Jane?
It is on page 25 of your report.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anything similar, anything similar description to that falling in E, F and G, which is live music, recorded music, performances of dance? So anything similar to that, essentially karaoke's covered under that section?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. So no more questions on the accuracy of the report. I will go ahead to the objectors to state their case. Would you like to go first, Mr Sefton? Or is that okay?
Your ma'am Chair, yes.
Lovely, thank you very much.
I'm happy to go first. I'll start and I'll finish with the same rhetorical question. Why are we here today? I'll ask the question because in 2005, I bought my apartment in the city centre, knowing that it was in what is classed as the night-time quiet area. An area in which pubs and restaurants will close by 12:30am. And in the council's 15-year future strategy document, Our City, Our Future, which I've got a copy to hold up, I'm sure you're all very familiar with it, the situation of closing at 12:30 is preserved. And that's a 15-year future document, so there's no change to that policy. And yet I've been forced to come today to protect the council's own strategy. Because this licence for a property inside the night-time quiet area is being offered later opening on two nights of the week. Why? Why have council officers agreed that this should break the planning requirements for the city centre? Now, there are several reasons why we, as the Residents' Association, are asking for a small change to the Soho closing times, simply to pull back 30 minutes on Friday and Saturday nights from 1am to 12:30am to comply with the planning regulations for the night-time quiet area. Now, this is a predominantly residential location. And the previous businesses on this site were Solita, which closed at 10am, sorry, 10pm, closed at 10pm, and Las Iguanas, which closed no later than midnight. The plaza began life, and I think it's very important to remember this, those of us who've been here a long time, began life with retail and restaurant outlets, all of which respected their location beneath what was then the city centre's largest apartment building. They were not part of the night-time economy and they accepted that fact. But gradually, the retail outlets have left, now they've all gone, and the restaurants are changing. This applicant for Soho is attempting to move the premises into the night-time economy. Initially by applying for 5am, Jane's just explained how that's been removed, for 5am closing, and now to 1am closing on two nights of the week. Now, everybody might think that's not much, but it's just the start. And we know from many years of experience, if this is permitted, it becomes part of the domino effect. Now, the domino effect is actually being used in this application by citing Revolution as justification for why Soho should be allowed to stay open later. Despite Soho being surrounded by a large number of residents, Revolution is in a totally different location. If you accept these opening hours, then other outlets in the plaza will come back and ask for the same opening times and this committee will then have to grant them because you will have created that precedent. And that will lead to late-night disruption of shouting, singing and taxi horns blowing into the early hours of the morning for residents. It's worth reminding ourselves that Revolution was given different times because it is in a different location and it's on Fitzwilliam Street, which is on the edge of the line that marks the night-time economy from the night-time quiet area. Revolution is not immediately beneath the densely populated West One apartment building. So the comparison made by the applicant is invalid. In this case, a short distance makes a huge difference to the number of people living nearby and the definition of what is a residential location. If this committee allows these opening times, others will follow on the basis that, well, Soho was given these times, so we want them. And it won't be just Friday and Saturday, it'll be Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And the domino effect will spread across the whole city centre. And this is a great concern of residents. We must contain the night-time economy in located areas where it can do whatever it likes. It can open till 5am if this committee will give its approval, but not in a residential area. Then, as I've mentioned, there is the council's recently published planning strategy, Our City, Our Future, which increased the city centre population to 35,000 people, most of whom will look forward to a good night's sleep, all living within a radius of 750 metres of City Hall. Now, that's the population of towns such as Falkirk, Exmouth or Spalding or Bridlington, the whole town of those places, living in a 750-metre radius area. To achieve that harmoniously, there has to be a clear boundary for residents to have quiet enjoyment. West One Plaza, with its original restaurants and retail inside the night-time quiet area, was always within that clear boundary. And for those people who say, and we've heard it said, including in council meetings, well, if you choose to live in the city centre, you knew what to expect. Two responses are relevant. The first is that the night-time economy has been allowed to expand considerably since I arrived, in my case, 18 years ago. And the council is committed to providing a large amount of new housing, which relies, in our City, Our Future plan, on the city centre to absorb much of that commitment. So if new accommodation isn't to be here in the city centre because people are turning away from it and we've just lost a resident who said, "I can't stand this any longer" off West Street, it's either new housing, excuse me, it's either new housing in your area, anybody in this room in your area, or it's expansion into the green belt. Now, as a residents' association, we're very happy to accept the housing expansion because it's changing the character of the city centre and will lead to many improvements. And in fact, in this respect, Sheffield is ahead of the curve in the whole of the UK. Manchester may be along with us, but in repopulating the city centre, we're right at the top of the curve to do this in towns and cities throughout this country. But you can't have the night-time economy expansion at the same time because we believe the two are not mutually compatible unless a compromise can be reached. And the compromise here, for all the reasons I've stated, is closing no later than 12:30am, which is stipulated in the night-time quiet area designation, which just reduces this application by 30 minutes on Friday and Saturday nights. It's a minor change, but a very important principle that preserves the established boundary between residential premises and the night-time economy, which is your council, our council's, planning strategy. I can't understand how officers have approved this. So I repeat, why are we here today? Our council has a strategy that we, as the Residents' Association, support. Are we here to drive a bus through that long-established strategy, now enshrined in our 15-year future plan? Surely not. If you have any questions about the situation, then please, I suggest, a site visit to confirm our assertions as to why we are so opposed to these two 30-minute extensions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can I have some clarification? Are you asking for a deferral for a site visit?
If you think you will accept the application as it stands on the documents in front of us, then we would ask for a site visit. If you decide that, or the applicant's representative decides that those two 30 minutes on Friday and Saturday night will disappear, we don't need a site visit.
Right, well, we can't do it like that. It's either deferred immediately, or, and I'd have to take legal advice, or we're here to hear the hearing. You can't, we can't... Can I take legal advice on that, please?
What I'd say is, members are obviously going to use their own local knowledge in order to make the determination today. I think the discussions that we had before and going through the application before the hearing took place is that members are fully aware of the location as to the proposed premises. We were having a discussion about what was there previously, how it fits in terms of being under the residential block. So I think, not to put words in your mouth, but the impression that I got was that everyone was quite aware of where the proposed premises are and what the situation is like there. We've also got access to Google Maps, Google Street View, so if we need to delve into it a little bit further there. I'm personally very familiar with it, I used to live not far away myself. So with my capacity as advising members, I can feed into that as well and I'm sure Mr White will be able to help as well.
I will just, excuse me, I'm familiar where the location is. Are you councillor Chin Chen? Are you councillor, I say? Yeah, it's very important that you feel that we are aware, do you know? But I can't, yeah, okay. Who next, did you want to comment?
The only comment I was going to make, I know there's lots of things there. Yes, yeah, oh, sorry, I was just going to comment on some of the things that were said by... Can't, that's fine, yeah, cheers.
Right, I'll hand over to you, Mr Booth.
Okay, thank you. I agree with everything that Peter's said and so rather than repeat some of the things that I was going to say, only to add that we've lived at West One for 20 years. So we've lived there since the day it opened. And we have seen things change and Peter's right that when we moved there, there were closed shops, there were a lot of restaurants, two or three closed shops, a guitar shop, various other businesses and retail like that. The only bar, as far as I remember, was Revolution, which was called Vodka Revolution at the time, which has its outlet on to Fitzwilliam Street. And at that time, there were no seating outside in the plaza area at all, which didn't come until, I think, 2007. So for four years, there were no customers outside at all. So in the 20 years we've lived there, the businesses, Las Iguanas mainly for the most of that time, on their behalf, Devonshire Green or City Estates or whatever they call themselves now because they've had about 15 different variations of their name, but anyway, our landlord and the landlord of unit eight and nine applied on behalf of all of the units to have longer opening hours. And unfortunately, the first time they did it, we knew about it, we saw the notice and we, several residents in the residents' committee made complaints. And I think in 2012, it was refused. And then the next time it came up, I think only a few months later, we didn't know about it, we didn't see the application and it was passed. So over the years, it's gone from, I think, 11:30 for Evolution closed when we first moved there, now to 1:30. And even though they don't close at 1:30, they close at 1, they still have a licence till 1:30. And that licensing planning was on unit eight and nine as well. But over the last 20 years, Las Iguanas closed on Friday and Saturday at 12 and Solita at 10. So they didn't need to be open, they felt they didn't need to be open till 1 or 1:30. So that's some background to it really. So to sort of agree with what Peter's mentioned about the night-time quiet area, we are in that area, West One is within that boundary and 12:30 is the recommended time for closing of bars in that area. So that's why we objected in the first place to 5 o'clock, then the applicant agreed to 2 o'clock and then 1 o'clock on Friday and Saturday. But we're asking for the time to be 12:30 to stop the, if you like, the creep or the domino effect to be happening within the plaza. Our apartment faces directly on to the new bar, Soho. The other thing which I kind of have started to mention, the other objection I've got, if it is an objection, I don't know whether it is an objection, that over the years, when applications have been accepted or granted, often what happens is that applicants come back, as City Estates did, to get extra time or to change conditions. For example, City Estates tried to change the conditions on Revolution to remove a management strategy without us knowing. And it was refused thankfully, so that management strategy is still in place, which the applicant thankfully has agreed to in their application. But it concerns me that the applicant has agreed to lots of different times, but we have no guarantee that after we leave here today, that they don't come back in a month and ask for a different time. And that's what concerns me and that's why I asked for some kind of guarantee or a period of time where they wouldn't make a reapplication. Because why would they if they're happy with what we discussed today? Why would you come back to ask for something else? And actually, what does concern me as well is some of the things in the application. So those are my two main objections. One is about the applicant reapplying, which has happened on so many occasions. Happened with a bar, a restaurant, supposed to be a restaurant next to us called Beju. They had a licence till 12 or 12:30. They got a licence till 3 o'clock in the morning without us even knowing. So there's a bigger issue here with blue notices and the fact that residents don't even know that an application's been made unless they happen to walk past and see the notice in a window or on a lamppost. And that isn't always feasible, especially if it's only up for a month. And Peter himself was away for a month, if it happens at that time, you wouldn't be able to see it. We'd all be able to see it if we were sent it in a digital way, which actually the government are trying to encourage councils to send people that are interested, things in a digital format. So that's one issue. The other is, what we've just discovered as soon as we walked in here, is that you've removed section H, which is karaoke. When we first found out about this bar, it was in the paper as a new karaoke bar. So it seems very strange to me why, the minute we've walked in here, the applicant has removed the karaoke section. And it seems strange also that the plan, I don't know which page it's on, but shows several booths, if you like, on the first floor, which seems to be consistent with a karaoke bar.
I've just come in there. You'll have the opportunity, because I am going to allow both the applicant and yourselves to question each other, to ask those questions, but thank you for raising it. But there's certain, you know, but you will get that opportunity. Carry on, sir, with your presentation.
Yeah, that was just a bit of a shock. And then the other things in the application, which don't seem to be very consistent with a restaurant, is that it says, it almost is saying that they want to encourage hen and stag parties, using those words. And then in the next few sentences, saying that it would be generally background music, mainly for eating, this is not my words, this is the applicant's words. And then it says that heavy drinking not an issue. Well, I then go back and see hen and stag to see that it would be an issue. That's the whole point of hen and stag nights. So there are some things there that don't seem to be consistent at all in the application. Hen and stag, heavy drinking not an issue. Well, it will be. So I think that's everything really. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Maxine Biggin, would you like to speak? You don't have to, don't worry.
I just want to, I know, I'd just like to back up what Peter and Mark said, just to continue to that, to sort, to round it up. Where we live, obviously you know, and I have questioned about restaurants opening till 3 and 5 in the morning. I wouldn't want to eat at that. And when I walk round, because I like to be informed, that's not always the case. They're sat there, the drinking still, and that is the part of it. Round where we live, it's on a Friday and Saturday, but mainly Saturday and it will be coming up when the warm weather is. We've got takeaways open till... We've got takeaways open till five. We've got bars open till four and five. That residual customer that frequents those places, which is one's two hundred and fifty yards away from us, forget about down below, that strip, West Street and Division Street, it can still be as noisy at that time, sort of like six o'clock in the morning, as it is at eleven o'clock at night when they start. In the Plaza, they start getting drunk at eleven thirty in the morning on a Saturday. The noise, the vortex where we live, that's why there was, I would assume, no bars as such, because of the vortex. The higher your buildings, as everybody knows or isn't aware, creates a noise system, like it does in New York, everywhere. The higher the buildings, the more sound effect you're gonna get. I, I like to go out, but I, I do see there's a massive change on West Street, which is becoming, how can I look at it and say it? It's just a pigpen, and that's the word I'm gonna use, and I'm sorry if I offend anybody. It's just disgusting. The aftermath of rubbish. It's just absolutely disgusting. And I, I don't say things if I'm not aware of what's going on around me. I go and look myself. And I do understand that licensing or councils or whatever, I think before anybody applies for a bar or for whatever they want to call it, should go and look. I mean, we've got planning in the town hall, everything. You can just look, you don't even have to go out and say, that is not fitting in that area. And again, I will back up what Peter said. I chose, I have been brought up, born and bred in town, and I've seen the change in that area, and it's disgusting. I'm ashamed. I'm ashamed that when people come from another city to visit me, I can't take them out on my balcony, which is pretty big, and entertain them because of the language, the rubbish, and everything. And I never thought I'd be sat here, because it upsets me that I'd have to do that. And when people live in suburbs, I only have to tell people where I live, and they go, oh my god, that's bad. That is bad. And it didn't used to be like that. So, I'm sorry, I've got a bit emotional, but it means a lot to me and other residents. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, uh, thank you. And don't ever apologize from speaking from the heart, and that's for everybody, because that's what we're here to listen. When, I'm now going to open it up first to questions from councillors, officers, and then I will move to yourself, Nick, okay? Just so you're aware that I'm not gonna forget you, don't worry. Okay, questions from councillors. Councillor Chin Chen.
Thank, thanks, Chair. Just in terms of the impacts on, on residents then, when you're inside, you know, in your, in your properties, is the impact mainly then from people outside in that Plaza area with noise coming up? Or is there, you know, an equal sort of impact from noise within the establishments themselves? Obviously, I know the previous documents were, were slightly different in terms of use. But I know, you know, Las Iguanas still had some drinking, you know, activities, so is there an impact there from inside as well as outside?
Yeah, it was a res, it was a restaurant before, for twenty years. The, the people that were sat outside didn't really cause much of a problem. The problem is what Maxine said, is that we, we know what it's like because we've got Revolution below us. And as a bit of preparation for today, we went out on Saturday night around nine thirty, ten thirty. And because of other complaints we've made about Revolution to planning, for the first time in about fifteen years, have actually closed the door. Whereas when we've asked them directly, they've just told us to go away or used other language to tell us to go away. Or if we phoned, they've put the phone down on us, whatever. So we've, we've not, and that's with an established business, Revolution. So the issue with noise is, can be and often is, on bank holidays, Fridays, Saturdays, and sometimes Sundays. But Saturdays can be from the minute they open, with people getting drunk outside. And just to put it, uh, put it in perspective, that they expanded to most of the Plaza area during the pan, pandemic. And we were empathetic to them because they've been closed for quite a while. And so we understood, we didn't make any complaints. There was a lot of noise, a lot of people and a lot of noise when it all started to reopen and social distancing went. But it's kind of continued, and I think that that's because they have nobody outside, nobody patrolling it. So they've done some of the things that they should have been doing from day one in two thousand and eight with their management strategy, but they haven't got a person out there. And Maxine met the manager on Saturday afternoon, and he said, we haven't got the staff to put a member of staff out there. Well, in my opinion, don't have any customers out there. If you can't staff it properly and look after the area, there were bottles out there.
Just, I don't wanna shut anything down, but we're not here to judge Revolution, we're here with the applicant. I know you're setting a context, but we've got to be careful because the evidence can, we, we know it's cumulative. I, I appreciate that. Can we just keep a little bit more context?
He was asking, asking about the noise, and the noise is, means that we can't use our outside area without having to listen to screaming and shouting and people that are drunk. And as soon as I heard the words karaoke bar and music bar, then it kind of felt like a similar kind of, well, worse actually, than, than the, than the sort of clientele that Revolution attract every Saturday to sit outside. So that's one thing, yes, the outside noise is disturbing and means we can't, we, in the summer especially, we have to have the windows open, the doors open all day because it's so hot. And so that's all you can hear all day. At night, they've closed the doors, but they've got the music that loud, and this is one of the issues with the building, is it's not built to have one hundred and ten decibel music inside. So we can hear the music in our apartment, even from downstairs, which is facing their music, it's facing the other way. The music from Soho would be facing us in our lounge. So we can hear the music with our doors shut. We're coming up to summer where the doors will have to be open because it gets up to thirty-five, forty degrees inside. We've only got doors, there are no windows on our patio. And, you know, it's, it's like having the music inside. So, yes, it's, it's too loud, even though they've got the doors shut, the music's coming through the glass because it's not effective. It must be extremely loud inside. So those are the concerns. And obviously, we have the experience of that bar and Coco across the road and Beju, Cavendish, Beehive, several bars around us, that all are causing a, a noise disturbance. So why would Soho be any different? That, that's the thing.
Just in relat, thank you, just in relation to, to, to closing times as well with the, with the current establishments, do you notice any difference in terms of the amount of nuisance and particularly in relation to noise at, at closing times?
Yeah, there's, there's another new trend, which I don't know whether it's a trend or a requirement, but Revolution have lots of people waiting outside all the time, yet the bar isn't busy inside. The same with Olivia's. Several bars have people queuing on the street, so they're noisy then. I don't know whether that's a requirement or just a trend to make it look busy, I'm not sure. The outside area finally calms down around ten o'clock. But again, because they, the staff don't patrol the area, their own staff, people are going to smoke in the Plaza area, and this will be up to any time. Also, they've got lighting now, City Estates decided, again, without letting any residents know, but that's typical of them, to put up really, really bright lights and leave them on all night, which they are on all night. I don't think they've got planning permission to do that. The last time they had lighting, it was turned off at eleven, and those are the requirements. So that just encourages people to spill over out, out of the bars and just stay there, either go to the, the off licence and get more drink and sit there. And until recently, there were lots and lots of tables and benches for them to sit on and sit there sometimes till two, three o'clock in the morning. If nobody's gonna patrol it and nobody's going to be asking them to leave, then it's quite a comfortable place and nicely lit place to sit. So yes, it's, it is, it is, uh, um, an ongoing issue.
Thank you, thank you. I think you've set that, I, I've seen you, Peter. I think you've set the context really clearly. We need to make really surely that we get the picture of what you're trying to set, but we're not here to discuss the licensing of that. But it's very important that the committee are aware, and I, you know, I just don't want us to get into that position. Mr Sefton, thank you.
I just wanted to comment in relation to what Councillor Chin Chen has just said, and the question he asked to, to Mr Booth. And it's, it's not directly to do with this, but it's directly to do with the whole of the night-time economy at the moment. There is a big investigation going on by planning currently into the fact that most of the people who we're talking about here on West Street, Carver Street, West One, Plaza, many of those people are not complying with their planning requirements. And this has been allowed to happen over quite a long period of time. And we've had a lot of complaints from lots of different people, so at the moment, planning are carrying out a big investigation.
As I said, we're not here to discuss the policy. I know it's really difficult, but it's really important, because I know that you're aware, because you're very, you've represented your community admirably and really, really well, Peter. It's been a long time since I've seen you, though. But it's really important that this particular hearing, that the evidence is based on that, otherwise we are open to challenges, you're aware. So it's very important that myself as chair, we get a good picture, but we have to judge this case independently. But it's been heard, thank you.
Thank you. My question is, is that West One building is noise-proof or not?
Our, our building?
Yeah.
The whole building is soundproofed, we've got double glazing.
Okay.
Is that what you wanted to know?
Yeah, yeah. And in last twelve months, how many incidents have been reported, you know, the noise nuisance outside? Any number of incidents?
Where, where we live?
Yeah.
I can't, I can't, I can't count how many. Can't tell you exactly.
I could probably answer that. If I hear noise disturbance, we've been told, and it's respectful, don't phone 101. I go directly to the bars. Okay. And then I'm approached as though, you know, sometimes I've had my tracksuit bottoms on, I will do it because I work for NHS. And I have to go up at half past five in the morning. Not good when you've been up all night. That's why I used to present myself. So the number of complaints would be quite a lot.
Maxine's complained directly to, to Coco, Revolution, OHM, when it was open, the revolving doors open. They have now been taken over by Brewski, Beju directly, when they had music on right next to us, Cavendish, Olivia's, all the bars within a hundred metres. I complained about noise on Devonshire Green all day, an outdoor sound system from the forum. People just say, the, the, the difficulty is, what you've just said about making complaints, you either make a complaint directly to the, to the staff, who might not be the owner, often isn't the owner. They, they are never aware of their licensing conditions. They're never aware of their planning conditions, and usually just tell us, we can do what we want. We're not bothered about the residents, we can do what we want. So this is our experience. When we complain to 101, it's very rarely taken seriously. When we complain to the noise team, unless that bar is on the, their list, they don't come out. So it's, it takes a lot from us, a lot of effort from us to get to the stage that we're here now today. Takes a lot of effort. But yes, we've made lots of complaints, but I can't tell you how many.
Well, that's what I mean. Apparently, might be you have made several, you know, maybe hundreds. But, you know, if there is any written report, so that might help us to decide which way to go. So that does very often, you know, any incident reported, whether it's through 101 or whether it's directly to bar.
Yeah, eighteen months ago, we made a complaint to, to Jane, we were here last year, about noise from outside of Olivia's, which is just down the bottom of us, it's across the road from West One. And that was resolved eventually, but it took a lot of effort on our part to get it resolved. They put in extra doors. They don't seem to be using the outside area much now, but they had permission, believe it or not, to have external speakers. And the people there who were running it decided to just turn them up and just keep turning them up. And so it's, unless the, the owner was shocked when he came and saw the state of it, and I think he decided to change it, but it took a lot of effort to get that meeting together. But we did it. So yes, we've made complaints to licensing, to planning, and, and also Beju, as Peter's just reminded me, what, only in February of this year, again, they're, they decided to have a private party because they wanted to till two, three in the morning. And it was upstairs with the door open, the fire door open. All of us, we didn't know that Peter was going down there to complain. Maxine phoned, our next-door neighbour who, who also lives opposite, made a complaint. Police came. So, and it takes that much effort. Yes, you could just think, well, I'll ignore it, but that was impossible to ignore. And so, yeah, there's, that's why I say it's, we've made so many complaints, it's difficult to put a number on it.
Thank you. Jane, could I just ask for some clarification? Mr Booth alluded to when, I don't wanna talk about individual cases, when residents have an issue. Maxine alluded as well that 101, you said you were told not to ring 101, is that correct? Obviously, you can go to your local councillors and they can report it for you. However, it shouldn't be like that. What is the protocol? Could you just explain that on when there is an issue?
If there are noise nuisance problems, the, the officers that are most appropriate to deal with it are the noise nuisance officers, and they are out of hours noise teams, but that is going through 101. So I'm not sure why you've been told not to ring 101, because that's how you access the, that's why it gets through to the noise nuisance team.
If I do, yeah, and I can tell you, when I've run 101 and I've managed to get through, because it does take quite a lot of time, they've said to go to noise nuisance council. But when you do that, again, like you've said, it's the availability. And it's not in that instance. And I think that could be looked at to help residents and whatever.
I think historically, they do have night-time noise officers that do work out of hours. But I don't know what, how their referral system works, because obviously that's separate to us, but my, my, my advice would have, would be to go through 101, because that's the way you access the noise nuisance team. So I don't know, I actually don't know any other way, really.
I was told not to.
I, I contacted them about Beju, and they said, go on the Sheffield Council website and fill in one of the forms online. And sadly, I got an email back, well, an auto reply first, and then got an email back way after the time, so it's the next day, I think, saying, due to the current circumstances, it will take us twenty-five days. the current circumstances, it will take us twenty-five days to get back to you or something. And I thought, that just isn't going to be acceptable.
Okay, I've noted that. I mean, I appreciate, obviously, um, we have got major staff cuts, so the teams are shrinking across the board, across the whole of the, you know, councils and police and everybody, which doesn't help you, I appreciate that, when an incident's happening. However, going, going back to what councillor has said and councillor Chin Chen was saying, even if you filled it in online, it is a record trail and it does help if we need to take action against bars and places later on. But people do all over the board just think, what is the point? But there is a point. It might not respond as I would wish and as you would wish, but it does help with the evidence, because otherwise it becomes anecdotal. And I'm not saying, and I know I don't have to tell you that, I don't have to tell Mr. Sefton that. But I just want to keep it as tight as possible, because I am aware of the cumulative, you know, accumulative. But we are here to hear, do you know, anyway, I'll hand back over to more questions. Okay.
Just to clarify, I think we've got quite a lot of agreed conditions between you both, which I'll probably treat as a separate issue, because there is just a little bit of duplication. And I think some of them we're going to have trouble, um, in ensuring that the applicant can actually meet. But separately from that anyway, sorry, can I just?
The applicant is gonna, what? I didn't hear the end of your sentence.
They duplicated, sorry, some of the conditions that's been agreed with you have also been agreed with EPS. So what I want to avoid is a licence that's this long with several different conditions and some of it.
Why does that make any difference to you?
Because we don't need duplication of conditions on the application.
No, most of the, most of the licences that you look at have got duplication in them.
Yeah, well, it's just an aside. So my point is just to try and nail down the issue because there seem to be quite a lot flying about. Is the main issue, the opening hours, that last thirty minutes between you? I know for you, Peter, it is, but for you as well, is it just purely the opening hours or have we got?
It was the two things I mentioned. I'm happy that the applicant has agreed to the conditions that I put forward, because those were mainly the conditions on Olivia's. And Jane and licensing helped tremendously in sorting out that real problem.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I'm pleased that, that the applicant has, has agreed to those conditions. Um, and yeah, there probably is some duplication, but I, when I'm writing it, I'm not totally aware of
Oh, yeah, no, of course.
The other conditions are, you know what I mean? Because it kept changing. It kept changing every time I looked, looked online. Um, but my main concern, my main concern, well, the one is about the opening or the closing time. And the second is about the applicant coming back, uh, in a few weeks' time and we don't see the notice and, um, ask for an extension or to discharge conditions and so on. That's, that's my real concern, because that's been reality for a number of bars in our area. And obviously, what you said earlier is judge this case on its merits. But we, we don't know the operator, we don't know anything about them. So how, how are we going to know? They might be perfectly okay. And I'm hoping that they are, but we don't know that.
Yeah, well.
Till they start to operate, which is why I feel there should be some safeguard for us, that we haven't got to walk past their building every day to make sure whether they've got a licence application and again, to extend it back to their original, uh, request for five in the morning. That, that's it really.
I mean, we're not here to discuss the policy of anything, because we have to act within the policies we've got now. Otherwise, we are open to a legal challenge on that. But we are listening. I just don't want, you know, we are, we are listening to what you're saying, do you know, completely. Sam, have you finished with your questions or is there anything else that you'd like to ask?
Just to clarify as well, I know you have agreed them between yourself, but the final say does lie with the committee. So they could say, actually, yes, these are great. We'll chuck those on the licence, but we also want to add X, Y and Z as well. Or potentially they could look at it and go, we don't think that one's proportionate. We don't think that should be on the licence. So although they are agreed in principle between you both, the committee have the final say on that today.
Are there any specific conditions that you think aren't appropriate?
I think potentially the management strategy is not enforceable. I think.
Why?
It's, it's incredibly prescrip, prescriptive. I think there's a lot on there.
Sorry to interrupt you.
No, no.
The management strategy is almost a direct copy of the management strategy that was agreed by Sheffield Planning for Revolution, literally across the plaza from, from the area. In fact, in fact, it was agreed for unit eight and nine. It was agreed for all of the units, unit fourteen, unit eight and nine. So it's actually already being agreed for, for that unit.
And I'm, I'm completely happy if that's on the planning permission. But for me, from a licensing perspective, for somebody that has to have staff to set up furniture at a set time, if they don't do that, if breach of these conditions is legally challengeable, they could be prosecuted.
It would be for planning surely.
Yeah, but I'm not here to look at planning. I'm looking at the licence. And I can't compare a premises that has never opened and I have no evidence to know whether they've caused a problem.
I agree with that, yeah.
I can't compare it to Olivia's. It's not the same as Vodkarev's. I don't know what the premises are going to be like. So all I can look at is what the premises are going to tell us, how they will operate. And the whole regime of licensing, unfortunately, it is permissive. It, it does work slightly differently from planning. It's less restrictive. There's a massive onus on the premises, owning that risk at the beginning and giving them the chance in order to prove that they are an operator rather than working backwards from it from a planning perspective.
I understand that.
Is how much we can put in place at the beginning, because they may cause a problem. We completely flip it and do it the other way around?
I don't think it restricts their operation at all, the management strategy. We could, we could come to some agreement about some of the wording.
I really don't want this debate to extend, do you know, into something that we can't control in this chamber here today, this hearing. Planning, I mean, I used to chat. I understand quite a lot about planning. A lot of it has changed dramatically since twenty ten, since twenty twelve. What isn't, what isn't allowed. And if there's any conditions that licensing can't do, then obviously they will have to be applied through planning. But we can't tell planning what we can do. We can only request it. And some of them, it has to go through planning first and comes to us. Now, that isn't a decision that the council can make. That is legislative. We haven't got a policy yet that enables us to do, do you know, to do that. So we really do need, I'm really not trying to shut this down, but a lot of what we're discussing, we can't actually, it won't help us form that, do you know, our decision. And I really want us to hear the evidence that we can really help form this decision on today. And, you know, as Sam has, as Sam has said, we will look at what conditions within licensing. If we decide to do that, we can actually put on it. What I can't do is tell planning what to do. I shall take legal advice, which we will during our private session. And I really do want to move this on a little bit. I'm not trying to shut you down. I'm just wanting to really hear what we need to hear in order to make a decision today.
Okay, oh, sorry. That raises a question and of course, and that is, can we see, as the objectors, can we see the new terms that Samantha's proposing, which are apparently a simplification of what's in this report? Is that right, Samantha?
Well, I don't even know if members are going to accept the application, so I can't speak as to the conditions. All I've done is read through, just noted some duplication, raised a couple of concerns that some might not be appropriate and enforceable. But in terms of additional conditions, should members choose to grant the application, obviously it would be notified of them afterwards, but I, I don't know what they might be at this point in time.
The question still stands then, doesn't it, that we would need to know what you've taken out? Because you say that's not enforceable through licensing.
Yeah, which would form part of the decision. So the final conditions that are going on the licence, should it be granted today? Obviously, yes, you would be, you'd be told of that.
They're not new or hidden. They're in the document on page forty-four. But obviously, they're only the proposals in front of us. We haven't made a decision at all and we can't move to that until we've heard all the evidence. And we've only heard from three of you out of four at the moment. And yeah, okay.
Sorry to interrupt again. The, the reason why I put the management strategy with those other conditions mainly was because they didn't, didn't seem to, I'm not sure if it was Jane or Emma or Gareth or somebody else at licensing, couldn't find a planning application for this, um, the bar, the new bar anyway. So, so that confused me, that there wasn't a planning application to make all the changes. And maybe that's the changes you're talking about, that it, that they're not needed anymore. I don't know.
Well, hopefully, Mr. White can clarify that for us, once he's given the opportunity.
So, so that's the reason why I thought, well, if it's not going to go to planning.
To safeguard it that way.
Yeah, to put those in there. Obviously, at the time I did it, I wasn't aware that, uh, well, I, I thought I was aware that licensing conditions can duplicate planning conditions.
Oh, yeah, no, they can. Sorry. I just meant they duplicated some of the conditions with sort of the police or environmental protection. That's all I was saying. Yeah, sorry.
All right.
Is that okay? Okay. Any more questions from members to Mr. Sefton and, and Mr. Booth? No, at all? Okay, would you like to ask, um?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, thank you. Yeah. Yeah, just in response to some of those things, there's a lot of information there, so. Uh, but on those conditions, you know, we thought, or my client thought, that was very helpful, you know, and we would certainly take it on board. They definitely want to operate, you know, and not disturb, uh, the residents. And so from the outset, in fact, it was my proposal that we submit the premises licence first before we finalise the internal fit-out design. Because the crucial thing is the noise. So, you know, and, but the management things you've suggested are helpful to them. They're not new operators, but this is a new type of business for them as a sort of group of people. Uh, another couple of things you mentioned, there's no outdoor seating proposed in this, uh, development. So it'll, it'll all be inside, yeah. Um, the planning approval for this, these premises are, the trading times are twelve thirty and one o'clock weekend. And the Environmental Protection Officer reduced the times that we proposed. Obviously, the five AM was a bit optimistic, but if you don't ask, you don't, you don't know. Uh, but that was brought back to two o'clock, as somebody's already said, and then, and then the times that we've agreed. But those are the ones stipulated by the current planning permission for those premises. So the clients accepted that. And they were, obviously, it's a big compromise from what they were hoping. So they're hoping that we can stick with that and, and get the thing going. Oh, the, the other thing to say really is that, that you, you'd mentioned about the, the position of this is different to Vodkarev. I know Vodkarev, they do have problems there. Their times, actually, trading times are greater, I think. They close later. Only by a short, a short time, but, but these, the times we've accepted are, you know, tighter than those. Uh, but the both facing into the plaza, uh, are you shaking your head on? Uh, the, well, what I will explain is that the ground floor premises we've got there, we've got two entrance doors facing into the plaza. As you look at the building, the left side door will be the entry exit point and only that door. The other two will be emergency and fire escape. And the, and the door that will be used will have a lobby erected on the inside with double doors. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that'll be where you.
Do you want to ask any questions?
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. I've sort of gone off, gone off course. Yeah, yeah. Well, that was really, that was really it. I mean, we, 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 those are just the comments based on what you were saying. You gave a lot of information there, but it's really for the committee to, and the chair to consider. So I've got no real questions on the objections, yeah, beyond what I've said, yeah.
No, it's very, this is a very, it's, you know, it's, it's very difficult to separate, but it's very important that we, you know, that we do so that decisions are sound. And that's really my job as chair to do that. Are you quite happy then that you've no more questions to ask directly to the applicant at this point? Lovely. I will hand over now to you to, no more question, well, we're going to go back open anyway. I will now hand over for you to state your case. And then you will be at the opportunity to actually ask questions after the councillors and officers have gone. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair, yeah. So I'm, just to explain, I'm the designer and the agent for the premises licence for Woodton Trade Limited. So just to explain the kind of business they, they want to trade here. It is, it is primarily a restaurant and bar. That we are, and I just want to clarify that point again, on the karaoke. We are allowed to trade, operate karaoke to a point in the evening. That is correct, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah. So there will be an element of karaoke on particular nights. And I, I can't say now, you know, when there's been probably Friday, Saturday, I don't know. So the ground floor will be an open restaurant bar, kitchen, back of house, customer toilets. And we'll have one function room, which will be accessible for wheelchair-bound people, ambulance disabled, with disabled toilet facility. Uh, and then upstairs, there's going to be six or seven private function rooms, which can be hired by small parties, uh, at, at any time. But the, the crucial thing from the outset, I got involved at the very beginning, was, was the noise breakout. And so I said, before we do anything, you know, we need to make sure we get the acoustics right on the building. So what we're actually proposing, we have had a noise consultant do a noise survey in, in the plaza about, I think it was the week before Easter, just to collect data on the background, uh, noise levels. And also the internal sort of breakout noise from, from the building, which we, which we haven't got the report yet, but we'll mix that into the proposed, what I call the technical design for the internal fit-out. Uh, so what we're proposing in brief is a cinema-style arrangement for, for the function rooms. So that is a triple acoustic wall and ceiling arrangement. So you've got, I'm not going to go into great technical detail, but you've got a room of like a box within a box and everything is acoustic to keep the sound in. So we are going to great lengths and cost to, to ensure that, you know, that, that the thing is, can operate, uh, you know, without disturbance to neighbours. So that's, that's the intention. We've not finalised everything yet, but that's, that's how it's coming together. Uh, so in terms, in terms of the times, I think I've already explained that, that we really, we would like to stick with the planning approved times, which we think are, you know, a bit tighter than Vodkarev. Uh, and if we can operate in the way that we think, you know, I don't think there's going to be any issue, issue to yourselves. We've, we've got the lobbied entrance. We're not having outdoor seating. I really, that, that's, that's really all, all I really wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Um, just want to turn your mic off, please. Um, I'll open to questions from councillors. Councillor Hussain, nothing to ask. Councillor Chin Chen?
Um, it was just in relation to, well, the point put by, um, the residents really about the outdoor area. I know you've not got outdoor seating, but just particularly at, at closing times, I suppose, when, when people are dispersing, um, what, what measures are you, you know, you prepared to put in place to mitigate the impact of that on, on residents?
Yeah, I think, uh, there, there will be security on the door to make sure doors are, you know, are closed and this sort of thing as you go through. And also to manage people leaving. There's the usual signage. And in, just encourage people to, you know, behave appropriately. It's difficult to say precisely what, you know, how you'll, how you'll do it until it actually happens. But, but, you know, the intention is to, you know, prevent. But, but, you know, the intention is to, you know, prevent people, uh, being noisy outside, where, you know, wherever they can.
So if people are, 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 say, loitering in, in the plaza area, because it does obviously attract that sort of, um, you know, that behaviour, I suppose, particularly at those times at, at the end of the night. Would you sort of take a proactive approach to dealing with that?
Yeah, definitely. I mean, there will be, you know, several staff. We've already kind of discussed that. I mean, thi- this is kind of early days. There's no fit-out, uh, started it in the building yet, other than strip out. Uh, but the management kind of, you know, comments that you've made yourselves and what we've discussed is, you know, those kind of things will be put into the management plan to try and, you know, manage those situations.
Thank you. And, and just one more, Chair, if I may. Um, is it predominantly then a sort of a, a, a bar and at certain times a karaoke establishment? Or, yeah, how much is it weighted towards that rather than the, the eating side of it? And what, what's the sort of balance there?
Yeah, I think, I mean, the ground floor will be, you know, restaurant, bar, you know, much like Vodkarev during the day, daytime. Evening, same, same, I mean, I think probably people, you know, drink more in the evening, not so much food. Who, who, who knows? Uh, but yeah, pre- predominantly restaurant, bar at, at, at the ground level.
Thanks, thanks, Chair.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions. Um, you've alluded that we've no outdoor seating. Thank you very much. Um, the residents did mention that you'd put on your, um, kind of marketing, that you wanted hen parties, stag parties, et cetera. We all know the connotations with that. However, would that be on a booking system? Would you be operating booking system for that? Because that would give you as an organisation some control about the numbers. And you've said that you want, that the bar will be operating, you know, to make sure that people are behaved, et cetera. I understand the pressures that businesses have, and, you know, that you want to get, you want to be maximally full as you can. So what about the queuing system? Because if I'm in there having a drink, you know, I could be in there for two hours or I might be in and out for one. So people could be queuing for five minutes. If people are queuing for ten fifteen, people start getting high junks. We all know that even me with my dodgy hearing today could probably hear, do you know, kind of, after being wait, you know, as we start to get a little bit excited and, you know, whatever. So it's kind of what measures are you putting in place? Because we understand that you've got a living to make. But, do you know, we don't want, you know, kind of people queuing for twenty minutes, thirty minutes. How are you going to manage stag hen week, you know, parties? Who will be very excitable outside. What is the marketing strategy behind that that can actually alleviate some of the concerns of the, of the residents?
Yeah, yeah, I, I understand that. I, I, in terms of s- stag, uh, parties, that sort of thing. You know, I'm unclear at this time as to whether that's a sort of focus. I don't think that's going to be the main focus. It's really local, you know, re- I think it's going to be aimed at younger, uh, groups of people, you know, to get together, come in, have a bit of fun, drinks, uh, food. And there will be a booking system for the function rooms. And obviously that will be controlled so that you haven't got crowds of people just trying to, uh, you know, get into a function room. It'll be pre-planned. The restaurant obviously will be open and you can, you can walk in.
Uh, couns- Oh, sorry. I would, is it all right? No, 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 no. You'll have your opportunities come in. It's councillors first, okay? But you will have your opportunity at the end. So. Okay, absolutely fine, walk-ins. Okay, fine. Um, is that including the funk, is, is the karaoke going in the function room only? Or the karaoke be where people can just walk in?
Yeah, I th- I think the intention will be that on, say, like a Friday evening, maybe Saturday evening, there will be a, a limited period where it'll be like an open karaoke mic, and you can put your name in the, you know, as you do in the traditional manner. And that is in the restaurant bar as well as the function room.
Right. So the karaoke will be in the function room, which is the bookable bit you've said, which is the, yeah. And they will, you will also have that down there. Could I also clarify that the impact assessment that you've been doing on the noise, I mean, there's a slight difference between, I'd hate to hear myself on a karaoke personally, and I think I'd probably hear me from out of space. Um, that you will be improving the insulation on that. Now, that I presume will be done by planning under planning legislation, but, you know, to make sure that that doesn't leak out, do you, you know?
Yeah, yes. We, we've already got the criteria from Jonathan Round, Environmental Protection. So we've been, we've met him on site and, and we, that was one of the first pe- people we met. So, yeah, we are, as I say, doing our best to make sure that we can comply with noise breakout. And the other thing will be in the sound equipment design, rather than have one, you know, large speaker on maximum volume. You know, we'll, we'll have the right spread that are facing in the right direction, so they're not facing to the door, that, you know, that sort of thing. So we are, you know, we're, we're trying to think all these technical things through here.
Um, I don't think I've got any more questions at the moment. I may have some as officers and yourselves ask if I want to expand. Have officers got any questions they wish to ask? I can see Jane indicating. Thank you.
It's only regarding your outdoor seating, because my first question was going to be, are you going to have any? And obviously you've answered no. Is that something that you plan to look at in the future as obviously the nights are getting nicer, lighter into the evening? Because obviously, in terms of your, your plans, obviously it's not put on your plans, but that's fine. It doesn't have to be anyway. But, um, I'm just wondering if there was any plan to look at that in the future.
Yeah, well, my, my clients told me that they don't want to have outdoor seating. So, I mean, whether that would change, you know, I can't say for sure.
Any questions from any more officers? Sam?
Can't help myself. Um, you covered with councillor Dunn about the noise management plan. So that's, I think you alluded before, you've had an external company to come in and get data. And then the plan will be formulated with John Round in environmental. And that'll be drawn up because he's sort of suggested the conditions, hasn't he, um, in terms of the lobby and the speakers as well? Um, fab. So just a bit generally in terms of your client, she said they had other licensed premises. I just wondered sort of what their experience was in running similar premises, whereabouts they are, how they sort of integrate with what's around them and, and things like that, basically.
Yeah, they've got, uh, restaurants and bars close by. I'm not going to say which ones. But they are close by, uh. Yeah.
No, no, I wasn't asking this.
Uh, yeah, but they, they are, they've got, you know, there's more than one person involved and they, they've got other restaurants and bars, you know, with that are licensed. But they're, as I say, I just want to envision clear that they are, uh, setting off in the right kind of uh, approach to, you know, to, to get the thing right. So they don't want, they're not sort of like, let's get trading and, you know, see what happens kind of thing. We are trying to tick the boxes and make sure it, it's not disturbing people.
I think you've already committed to working with residents and providing a number for while the premises are open should there be any problems. Uh, I know it's difficult for you to say, given that you won't be running the premises yourself. But obviously we've heard of experiences where residents have gone and not been met in the best way at all, um, and just having no joy whatsoever. So hopefully you can provide an assurance that your client will be, be different in that respect.
Yeah, well, as, as I say, from the outset, I've told them the licensing is the key to the whole thing. As a, you know, there's no point, uh, pushing some furniture in and a microphone or whatever. Start trading and then you've got a lot of objection and you get closed down or, or just aggravation, people knocking on your door. So we are trying to get the, you know, the things set up. They're, they're aware and they want to, you know, work that way. So I'm quite sure they'll, you know, provide the number and, you know, do what is right and proper.
I have one more question. Um, I think it was Mike Senior, uh, or it was yourself, Mark, that mentioned that you were no longer saying you were a karaoke bar. So I'm a bit confused where that's come from, because quite obviously you are, do you know, going to be a karaoke bar. But, yeah, it had switched. So could you just clear up that little bit of misinformation?
Yeah, I think the, the karaoke is part of the, of the whole thing, because that is, uh, you know, the intention to a music bar and, uh, but, but there'll be visual, you know, music visuals, this sort of thing. But it, but it is a restaurant bar with karaoke at, at certain times.
Thank you. And just one comment. I don't think we will be working with residents. I think you will be. Not we might be. It's really important, do you know, that we all respect each, you know, it's not a either or. But thank you. I will. To yourselves now to ask questions. Could you indicate who would like to go first? Thank you, Mr Sefton. He's pressed his red light.
Yes, a question for Mr Nick. I'm sorry, Mr Nick, I don't know your second name.
Mr Nick Wa- White.
Um, right, Mr White. Um, you mentioned that planning approval is to one AM. Now, that's a surprise to us. We weren't aware of that. It completely knocks our feet from under our objection, because our objection is that according to this document and according to the council's current planning, this is in the night time quiet area. Can we please see that planning approval that goes to one AM? And I don't know whether Mr White can provide that or somebody else can provide that.
It wa- it was that, sorry, can I?
We would like to see that, uh, approval, because we'll need, it, it then becomes a problem for us with planning if they've approved that.
It, I'll tell you the reference, the planning reference is fourteen forward slash zero double three five six forward slash F U L. Uh, sorry, fourteen forward slash zero double three five six forward slash F U L. And that was, uh, approved in two thousand and fifteen. So what, it was one of the later, uh, variations to the original, yeah.
Actually, you might be aware, there's two levels, just because planning might approve it. Often licensing has a different, do you know, way on it. So it needs a two to align, which is why we do need a proper, you know, we're working on a different policy that can make it much simpler, because it does make it very complicated. But we can move on, you know. Licensing does have the say on the licensing hours. But it does need planning to approve that you can give a licence in the first place. But the hours are here in this hearing today. Okay?
So, so you can agree with our request?
Then the legislation, do you know, yes. But that's why the applicant could ask because of that. Okay?
I think if members were so minded, they could actually say, you know, you can shut at ten PM if they felt there was reason to. They, they can do that. We can't go past the planning hours, so we can't say yes. Actually, you can have five AM on your way. We can't go past that terminal hour of licensing. So whichever, I say it all the time, you're probably bored of it. Whichever is the most restrictive, either one has to, have to abide by that. So if licensing says shut at ten, it's ten. So whichever's the most restrictive is what we go with. And that's for planning and licensing.
Thank you.
I will hand back over to you, Mr Sefton. Okay. Have you finished asking your questions?
Yes, I have. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Mark, oh, sorry, is it okay if I call you by your first names? Yeah, okay. Do you want to?
Um, yeah, the, the thing about planning is, is there actually a planning permission required for the, for all the alterations that you're, that you're carrying out?
Uh, no, we've been told that's not necessary. It comes under the existing usage.
Is it this thing called Sue Generis or something like that? Is that? Because there's, I'm trying to read about planning, but it's really boring, but, but it is. So.
I actually found it very interesting. As I do licensing.
Oh, I'm trying to learn about both, which has been a rapid learning curve, but, um, not, not out of pleasure. But, but anyway, that, that's cleared that up. So the, the planning document you're referring to, I, I have read that one. Um, fourteen O three three five six, and I've got condition twenty here. Um, but I didn't realise that, that that's the opening hours that you were referring to. So it goes back all that way, nearly ten years. Is, is that correct? Yeah. Um, but part G of that is about the management strategy. But because when I wrote the objection, I, I couldn't see any planning document. That's why I picked out the, the management strategy, which you're saying would be helpful. I think is helpful. I don't think it's restrictive. Um, um, a- at all really, but maybe that's what you'll look at. But I think it's, it's worked okay. Well, it hasn't worked for the other bar. But it should work, that what's in it is good, but, but the application of it hasn't been good. But that's, that's what we didn't want to happen. And a lot of that management strategy was the outside area. And, but, but the same question, I think Jane asked, is our concern, and I suppose, you know, we are more concerned now than we used to be. We didn't have this, we didn't have the issue of an outdoor area. Um, we didn't have bars, we didn't have karaoke bars wi- within our area. Um, is that, I'll come back to that same thing, is how, how do we know that you're, the applicant after a, a, a few weeks or whatever, aren't going to come back here to request an extension or, and to have outdoor area and then we, we, we just ha- don't, don't happen to see it? That's my biggest concern apart from the opening hours.
Yeah, I'll respond, yeah. Uh, yeah, I, I understand that, those concerns. Uh, I can't say that they wouldn't, they wouldn't want to extend, you know, anything or change anything. Uh, but they would only be able to do that, uh, certainly at the times, anyway, with, with planning permission as well or first. And, you know, people have opportunity to object to that. Uh, and, and that would only be done if, if they felt and that they were operating, yeah, in a responsible way, yeah.
Thank you. Jane or Sam, could you come in and give a bit of clarification about, you know? I know, it's okay. Um, the question was, from Mark, was if we so granted a licence today and it was more restrictive, how long is it and what is the process for, if the bar would then say, will we want to extend to back to where it was? So say, for instance, we granted it till twelve o'clock today or twelve thirty, and then they want to go for the one o'clock. Could they do that next week? Is there a time limit on it?
No time limits at all.
Okay, that's.
They could do it. They could walk out there and apply straight away to vary if they wanted to. Not that I think that would happen, but essentially there's no restriction on time lengths before further applying.
And because this has already been to committee, would this automatically be referred to committee if that happened? Or would it require objections from residents?
So.
And the obje- when an application goes in, it goes upon a list that people can get emailed out or it just goes on lampposts?
So in order to change your licensed hours, because it's an alcohol licensed premises, it would need full variation, which is very, it's almost, almost identical to get this grant twenty-eight days, blue notices and whatnot. There's no, there's nothing in the legislation that says the local authority has to give notice to individual residents in the area. The, the prescriptive advertising legislation is blue notices on or directly adjacent to the premises. And, um, advert in the public notices section in your local newspaper. There is an online registry of all applications that we receive, which is updated as soon as we get it. And it is a case of just clicking onto our website and it, it's updated as soon as we've got one in. It's updated straight away. So everything should be on there that we've received. But there isn't actually that, there's not the prescriptive wording to say you must like letter drop all the surrounding residents. As much as that would probably alleviate a lot of licensing issues and has done historically, or probably would have done historically, that's just not something in the legislation that we have to do. So it is a case of looking out for, for things like that.
Can I just, sorry, can I just?
No, I just want to expand on this, just so it may alleviate the concerns. When you say legislation, is this national legislation that we are abiding by? Yeah, it's the Licensing Act two thousand and? We can't alter that, can we?
There's no, there's no mo- room for movement within it now.
I'm not trying to hide away. I'm just. Not trying to hide away, I'm just trying to make sure that we don't, you know, that we know what we can change and what we can't. There is the question about how we can communicate this to residents a little more, which I totally take on board. But, you know, that's not particularly a discussion for this particular meeting. But I think it's one that's very, very relevant. It's what we can do in the licensing committee today. Thank you. Have you anything to add to what Jane said? And then I'll hand back over to Mark.
No, just to iterate about the list of the pending applications, I find it quite useful because it gives me a heads up as to what's likely to come to committee. But for you guys as well, because like you say, if you're away, you're not wandering around licensed premises looking for blue notices as part of your daily enjoyment, I imagine. Because it's quite tedious. But that is, as Jane said, updated quite regularly with all the premises that are either doing a new app or having a full variation. So I can see actually that Beji was on there at the minute as well, just in case you'd missed that one.
Yeah, this is the issue that we've got is that we don't want to spend our days here really. We would rather, Maxine had a meeting with, so happened with the manager of, or the manager of Revolution. And when we had a meeting with Olivia's owner, it's much better, I think, if they respond in the right way, well, not the right way, if they respond in a way where you can communicate, then that's obviously a much better way of resolving things. But it seems to just take a lot of effort on our part to get that respect from some of the owners, I'm not saying this owner. And so that colors our view of owners of bars. Sorry, but that's just a fact. But the thing with the notices, yeah, it's probably not for this meeting, but it is relevant because Peter went away for a month, we might just not happen to see it. And I don't want to spend the rest of my life looking on the licensing committee. I do get the, I do get an automatic email about these meetings. And I often look at it, I can't help it, but I click it to look at it. I don't really want to be doing that amongst all the other junk. Not saying it's junk email, but I get lots of junk email. No, it's really useful. But I don't want to spend my time reading through to find it's just often Hackney carriages and not meetings. So it puts us in that kind of position. And the only thing I would say is going forward is that we would have to, so that it isn't just reliant on us, is to put notices out ourselves to residents. We're in a residents committee. But to put them actually in people's doors so that everybody knows. And then you might have 50 people here for every building, Royal Plaza, West One, all around the area. And that, if it doesn't change, that's what could happen, you know?
I might be able to alleviate a little bit. We've got the new local area committees, well, they're a year old now. And that might be something that you could raise at the local area committee. Because they're there to work for you and make all this an awful lot easier, like with planning and licensing. And, you know, it's where you can discuss and bring those things up and collectively bring everything together and really empower your voice, do you know, on that. And, you know, you sound like you're acting like a local councillor chasing through the list. That's what we do when we get them every week to see. And, you know, so, I mean, we can, I will certainly mention it when we're doing, after the elections. Because we have to be really careful at this time of the year, you know, with Perda. It's kind of, I know that in my local area committee, we're looking at things like that because things cross over. And it actually helps you because, you know, councillors, you know, elected councillors are here to help you and to be your voice and think. I know when I get things in my ward, it's like, oh, do you know, do we need to take that somewhere? But I can take that up as a councillor and put that forward. And, you know, we see what we can do and then we, you know, but yeah. Mr Sefton?
I'll be very brief, I'll be very brief on that, yeah. I've made a note of that LEC. I'd already put that one down on my list as well. There's a few interesting action points from this meeting. I appreciate the discussion we've had. And quite a few action points that we can deal with outside the meeting. But what we're coming up against now, just my final comment is, we're coming up against this clash between 35,000 residents coming into the city centre and the night time economy and trying to keep reasonable rules between the two. And for the success of the future of Sheffield City Centre, it's absolutely vital that that's what we between us manage to do. Thank you for a very comprehensive.
Yeah, that's very quickly. You mentioned about, it's called Bottomless Brunch, you know, when you go to hide the horrible. But you do actually queue. So you do either get an hour or two hours. Just across the road at Leopold, you have to queue for the next lot to come in. They have to clear it away. So I'm quite worried that people will have to sit somewhere outside. And it is done by a booking system in all these premises that do it, but they do sit outside.
Well, if there's no way to sit.
Well, that's what I'm saying. But then you're going to get people congregating till the next booking's going in.
That's what will be picked up in the management strategy. So management of people entering and exiting the premises. If they're going to have a load of people queuing, they don't want that either. It doesn't look very good. So that's something that they're going to have to pick up.
And they're doing it for dogs as well. So on Sunday we're going to be with golden retrievers in that quadrant. So that's the nature. So something in my head resonates, could be queuing outside. I mean, it's got to be thought out.
I'll be honest, at this point, I can't really be specific about the actual management. It's something that'll unfold as they get closer to the trading time, but it will be considered. You know, and I'm listening obviously to what you, all these discussions and things. So I'll pass that on to my client.
Then I did think, wow, the five o'clock appliance first, because I've got a rough idea. Would workers from other premises be going in there to relax after work? Because that's the only thing that could resonate, five o'clock appliance.
Again, I can't really, I can't really answer that, I suppose.
Because I just think, just very quickly, if anybody, you know, things like this go off all the time. I think people have got to stop treating a public house as a nightclub. Because you're extending four o'clock, five o'clock at pub as a nightclub. It's not a public house anymore. And that's the difference. And it's getting a perpetual with rubbish, policing, hospitalisation. It's quite frightening really when you actually do live in it and see it, which they're not public houses anymore. They are nightclubs. Never in this world has Sheffield got 10 nightclubs. So I think licensing and planning ought to really like, look at what we're doing. And we've got a perfect space on Fargate if you want to open and operate like that where there's no residential. That's where it used to be nightlife, not near residents. Thank you.
They're looking after me, yeah. They're very, very, I know, yeah. Any more questions at all from anybody? Okay. I'm going to hand over to you, Mr White, to sum up to why we should consider the application.
Right, yeah. Thanks again for inviting me, as it were, to come on. I've listened to all the comments and it's all valid and so forth. So, and I'll be going away and discussing that with my client. So really, I just want to reassure you that it's not, you know, it's not a flyby night sort of setup. It's just going to railroad all over everything. So, and we would really like it if you could support the times that we've agreed with environmental health. And that's all I can say really. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to hand over to Jane now. Or is it Sam that's going to give us the options on the, that the committee is going to consider? Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so the options open to the committee this morning are to grant the premises licensing terms requested, to grant the premises licence with conditions or to reject the whole or part of the application.
Thank you. And thank you very much for all attending. We're going to go into private session now. And you will be looked after very nicely by, who's going to be looking after you? Okay. Oh, you don't need anybody. In another, sorry, I'm getting confused. Doesn't take much. We will escort you out, do you know, there and we'll call you back. And thank you very much for all your input. It's been very, very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're very considerate, Chair, Chairmanship.
So nice to see you again, Peter, actually.
Can I just ask, do we come back? No, we'd like to come back.
Have we got a time now?
No time.
Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. Sorry to keep you waiting. Right, the committee, after a lot of scrutiny, has reached a decision. We are granting with the conditions agreed with South Yorkshire Police, the Environmental Protection Agency and HBC and with the agreed conditions of the residents. With the closing hours, Sunday to Thursday to 12.30, Friday to Saturday and the day before public holidays, they will close at, licenceable activities will cease at 12.30. Okay, so that's a slight change. Okay, I will hand over to Sam.
Just to dovetail that, so Friday, Saturday and the days before public holidays, the licensing activities will cease at midnight 30 with the premises to close at 1am. So there's that half an hour dispersal, drinking uptime, whatever we call it nowadays. So obviously, given that you've objected to the application and that we've changed your application quite significantly, you both have rights of appeal. So that's within 21 days of receiving the notice to the magistrate's court. So essentially, as you probably know, they'll sit, as members have done today, and consider all the evidence before them at that time and whether the decision that members came to was correct in light of all that information. But you do have that right. You'll be given a notice following on from the hearing that the legal advisor will draft and licensing will send out to you in whichever way you so choose to have that. But it'll list everything on it. It'll be quite a lengthy document, I imagine. As we sort of discussed, I'm just going to take out some of the ones that duplicate, so about notices and stuff. I'm not going to take off any of your conditions that aren't duplications. Given that the management strategy related to outdoor seating and not having outdoor seating, we're going to keep that off for the time being. But obviously if things change in the future, you know, if they do want outdoor seating, then it can be revisited at that time. But it won't feature at the moment just because it's not relevant to the licenceable activities that are featured. So hopefully that's clear. I know it's quite a lot to have thrown at you.
Is it okay to ask something?
Yeah, sure.
Have you agreed to, I think the way it was, the last time I looked, it was Sunday to Thursday was 12.30 and Friday and Saturday was 1 o'clock. So is that what you've agreed to? Right.
So no serving after 12.30, basically? Yeah, okay, thanks.
Is that normal?
Yes.
I mean, the city centre, they tend to have the 30 minutes gap just to, so that you don't sort of, lights are on, music's off, everybody get out. You sort of have that natural, we find that it works quite well with a reduced dispersal, a staggered dispersal, sorry.
Okay. Right, thanks.
Okay, I can thank everybody for their time and have a lovely week. Okay, hope the sun shines for you. Thank you. I will now close the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you very much to everybody for your support. Very grateful.